Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Planning Commission Meeting, Wednesday, July 24, 2019. I now call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, unregretted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Denise, will you please call roll?
Sure. Chairman Maloney.
Here.
Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Harmon. Commissioner Ladue.
Here.
Commissioner Shagley.
Here.
Commissioner Brandon Smith. Commissioner Randy Smith.
Here.
All right, so we are slim tonight, but we have a quorum. That's correct.
We're out.
So, good news. Item number three, approval of minutes. I now ask for an approval of the minutes from the June 26, 2019 Planning Commission. Were there any corrections to the minutes? Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Commissioner Smith, second. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Shagley.
Yes.
Commissioner Randy Smith.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
That's everyone, huh? Quick.
Yeah.
All right, item 4A, rezoning. Scholastic Plan Development District, PDD, case number Zone 2019-003. I now open this public hearing. The provisions of the City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as if set forth verbatim. So at this time, I think we'll start with a staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The first of our public hearings this evening is a request to rezone the property at 615 Pike Avenue. This is to create a new planned development, or PDD, district calling itself Scholastica, and this is the evaluation of the preliminary PDD. I'll underscore the word preliminary and come back to that a bit later in my presentation. The subject property is a 7.41 acre parcel located at the northeast corner of North Sixth Street and Pike Avenue. The property is known within Canyon City as the Saint Scholastica Campus, a private parochial school which had an all-female student enrollment. There are multiple buildings on site which date to different periods. The oldest is known as the Big Red Building and was constructed in 1897. The maintenance building was finished in 1950 and the existing dormitory building opened in 1961. The principal classroom building was finished in 1970, and the final addition to the site was the library and chapel building, which opened in 1983. The site operated as a school until 2003. In 2005, the site was again opened as a juvenile detention facility but was shut down after only 18 months of operation. Since 2007, the site has stood vacant and unmaintained. This period of lack of maintenance has taken its toll on a number of the buildings on site. In 2017, a local developer purchased the property and obtained approval of a PUD overlay to allow multiple types of residential on-site. However, nothing came of this effort to redevelop the property, and that developer is no longer associated with this property. The subject property is currently zoned R2 and R3, medium and high-density residential respectively, with a planned unit development overlay upon it, which allows for some relaxation of residential density limits and lot size minimums. As previously stated, this zoning was established in 2017. The applicant seeks to replace this existing zoning with a parcel with a planned development district, or PDD. This can be thought of as a customized form of zoning, not necessarily related to any established Euclidean zone district as defined in the Canyon City Municipal Code. The proposed PDD, which we are evaluating as a preliminary approval tonight, proposes three internal land use areas, or planning areas. From north to south on-site, these three planning areas are PA1, the single-family residential district, PA2, the office commercial district, which also features a neighborhood park, and PA3, the multifamily residential area to the south. Each of these three planning areas not only has its own use, height, and bulk limits, which is constituting traditional zoning, each also comes with certain design standards as well. The proposal intends to reuse the classroom and chapel buildings as a professional office, a call center, and the master developer has an investor who wishes to rehabilitate the Big Red Building. The dormitory building will be renovated into an internal dwelling use. This would be multifamily in this case. And finally, a neighborhood park sits at the center of the Scholastica PDD and links to all these various land use areas. For more detail, Planning Area 1 proposes to create 13 single-family residential lots. The proposed zoning would allow each lot to have both a principal residence and one accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, in much the same conditions required for ADUs elsewhere in Canyon City. This would potentially mean as many as 26 dwelling units within this planned unit, within this planning area. All of these dwelling units would be accessed via a proposed alley which would connect Sixth and Seventh Streets. There are no proposed driveways coming into front yards, and this has to do with the desire to create a traditional neighborhood design for this single-family area. As contemplated, the lots would range in area in size from 5,900 square feet to 7,650 square feet, with an average lot size of 6,475.8 square feet. For comparison's sake, this is approximately the same density one could achieve in the R2 medium-density residential zone district. As a traditional neighborhood design concept, the fronts of each home will orientate themselves either to Floral Avenue to the north, or to the neighborhood park to the south. Build-two lines will then be employed to ensure the front door and any porches address and activate the adjacent public space. Planning Area 2 is the non-residential portion of the Scholastica PDD. The applicant is creating three parcels around each of the three existing buildings within this planning area. These three parcels will comprise 1.74 acres in area. The existing classroom and library and chapel building are intended to be an office at use dedicated to the same user. A different investor will focus on rehabilitating the Big Red Building and putting it to a slightly different office use unrelated to the call center operation intended for the classroom and library buildings. Each user will be required to meet its own off-street parking requirement separately. Finally, making up the balance of Planning Area 2 is a neighborhood park which will feature landscaping, activity fields, and a set of internal trails. The space will form a green relief area in the middle of the Scholastica property and transition from single-family uses at the north end of the site to non-residential and higher-density residential areas at the south end. Planning Area 3 is the high-density residential area within the Scholastica PDD. This portion of the property contains the existing dormitory building. The applicant seeks to convert this building into owner-occupied condominiums. This planning area comprises 2.08 acres of the site, and the applicant plans to create 45 total dwelling units. As is the case with the non-residential uses in Planning Area 2, the condominium project will meet its parking requirement on-site in the area between the building and Pike Avenue. Between Planning Areas 1 and 3, there is the potential for 71 total residential dwelling units within the Scholastica PDD. Now, in addition to the typical zoning requirements, the Scholastica PDD also includes design guidelines for the various planning areas. These pertain to landscaping, fencing types, pedestrian paths, and screening of certain areas from adjacent streets. As this project moves forward into the next steps in the PDD approval process, these details will be further refined and may include such additional standards as things like site lighting and potentially even building materials on the single-family residential. Now, staff would like to reiterate that what is being considered for approval this evening is the preliminary PDD for Scholastica. The intent is that there will be additional hearings as this project moves towards final PDD, as well as for subdivision plat and site plan associated with the PDD. The Planning Commission, what the Planning Commission is considering this evening is simply the beginning of the process, not the end. And what is being requested of Planning Commission is that the big-picture concepts associated with this project be considered, and the details associated with this project, and there are a number of details, we acknowledge, be noted but deferred until later, more appropriate stages of the process. Now with that, the staff recommends that Planning Commission cite the four findings of fact included in the staff report as certification of the city's jurisdiction to hold a public hearing, and decide on the rezoning of the property at 615 Pike Avenue to the preliminary PDD planned development district known as Scholastica. Staff also recommends that Planning Commission recommend City Council approve the preliminary PDD zoning requests for Scholastica, subject to the four conditions contained in staff's report. Now, this will conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that Planning Commission may have. Present to speak on behalf of this project is the applicant, Mr. Phil Lund of Homes of the Canyons LLC.
Thank you, Patrick. We'll start with the Commissioner. Are there any questions of staff?
Yes. So, you said the PDD can result in roughly 71 units. Under the current R2 and R3 designation, do you have an idea of what full build-out could be?
I believe the number that we came to was either 92 or 96.
And then the accessory dwelling units, I do believe I saw that that has the same residency requirements as R1?
The ADU requirements are the same regardless of whether you're talking about R1 or R2. The only difference between R1 and R2 is that you have to, the owner of the property has to live in either the principal residence or the ADU for at least six months out of the year.
And so that residency requirement is applicable here?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I clarify? R1 and R2 have that same requirement?
R1 and R2 both allow for ADUs as a special review use. The residency requirement is applicable to R1.
Okay, thank you. Got it. Any other questions from the Commission for Patrick?
Yes, I would like to ask the question. You said a call center for possible, as the employment for, or the use of one of the buildings, or two of the buildings. So that would, have they projected about how many employees there would be, how that would involve with the parking?
I'm going to defer on that question. I believe the applicant has some folks with him who would be better able to describe what that user, what that particular user is, and how many employees they will have at the initial opening, and what their projected build-out is.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, maybe we should have, maybe the applicant would like to come up and speak on behalf of the project, and anyone else you have to help you, so we can answer some questions ahead of the audience questions, maybe. State your name and...
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chair and the rest of the Commission. My name is Phil Lund, and I'm with Homes of the Canyon LLC, and I'm happy to address you tonight, and just got a few things I'd like to address, including some of your specific questions. So, the Chair is correct, I do have some additional folks that I think can help with the specifics of this as well. So if you don't mind me just telling just a little bit of story as far as who we are, and what we're up to, and what we're trying to do with this particular property. I represent, as I mentioned, Homes of the Canyon LLC. Homes of the Canyon is a fairly new LLC that was started in 2017, and we started coming into Canyon City because we love Canyon City, and doing some rehabs with some projects specific to houses. And then we ended up also buying an apartment complex, which is at the corner of Second and Macon, and we converted that into condominiums. So we've had experience specifically with converting buildings into condominiums in Colorado. I myself have also done that process in Michigan, which is where I've spent most of my life. I did a 42-unit conversion in Michigan specifically with an apartment, two condos, and also did a retail project where we created retail project, or retail condos. So this is something that has been in my focus in the past, and I have experience with it both in Colorado as well as in Canyon City. So Homes of the Canyon LLC is also creating a vision for itself as we come into this. We hadn't planned on getting involved with Scholastica, but we have. So the principal, there's a couple people who are principals. One is Victoria Leherheimer, she happens to be here tonight, and she is in the audience and myself, but we are also have the opportunity to bring in additional investors. So I want to just tell you that our company itself is merging and growing and changing, and that's all as it should be, because we just see a lot of opportunity with Canyon. So I was introduced by one of the city's staff to Mr. Michael Butler in December of last year, and our interest was in purchasing six of the lots along Floral, as it stood at that point, and subsequently having conversations with him and the city, we found out that there really wasn't six lots there, that the PUD hadn't went through the process. And given my background, Mr. Butler started to engage me with becoming the point person for moving that PUD process through the city. And at a point, like 30 days later, he approached me about the purchase of the property, which was a surprise to me, and so we started talking about that possibility, investors, et cetera. And after some quick decisions, we made the decision that, yeah, we would like to get involved in a substantial way with this and become the owner of it. And that process to get from the initial process to actual closing on the property was fairly complex, and it took about two months to get through, maybe two and a half. And so in May of this year, we went ahead and purchased that property. So at that point, we started looking at the property through a different lens than what Mr. Butler had. He was talking about low-income housing, he had a concept of doing some different things that are completely not our vision at all. So I want to state very quickly that whatever that vision was prior to May of 2019 is no longer the vision for the property. We looked at it with our own lens and what we were going to do with that property. And again, given my background with condominiums, I always visioned, and even with Mr. Butler, I tried to convince him that the dormitory lends itself to, not apartment complexes, but lends itself to people owning various residents in that condo, or in, I'll call it a condo from henceforth, because it's no longer dormitory, it's going to be condos. And so we started looking at that, and we also started looking at the individual assets that are on that property. So as Patrick indicated, there are some buildings on that property that have substantial liabilities with them, and some of them are no longer there, and I want to address that. But again, from a focus standpoint, it was what are the assets on the property that we can keep there, and what needs to go away, and how can we accentuate the positive and really remove the negative for this campus that many people have very significant emotional attachment to. When we started tearing down the gym, and I want to again address that, there were people that have went to school there, and I read the social media comments, and they were sad that that was taking place. They hadn't went in there because it was really a pigeon coop at that point, and there were substantial cracks, and the building really needed to go away. But I understand the emotion that people had with that. The other group that has a great deal of emotion, of course, are the neighbors, and what's going to happen to the property, and we're trying to work our way through that also in our lens, so that we're taking into account city's staff's requirements, the neighborhood, what people have looked at from a historical standpoint. So as Patrick also, I've got to know the city personnel, so I hope you don't mind me calling you Patrick, and some of the other ones, they call me Phil, so we're kind of informal with our discussion, but we have good discussions as well. So we moved it from a PUD to a PDD, and the reason was is that this is not all about housing at this point. The planned development district, which is 17.17 in the ordinance for the city, allows for economic development issues to come into play, as opposed to the PUD, which is typically just a housing concept. So we really thought that that served our purposes better. Now, the PDD ordinance is, of course, usually 100 acres, 200 acres, something that's quite significant, and this is only 7.5 as far as an average on the lot, but it still has a piece of it that is economic development focused. So with discussion with our attorney and discussion with city staff, we thought that was the better vehicle to move this thing forward. So that's why the request is on the planned development district as opposed to a PUD, and that was the evolution that we made. So we quickly put together a team, once the property had closed, to get together and make a submission, and we missed the May deadline, there was just no chance for that, but we wanted to get into June, so we would be on your agenda tonight. So immediately, we found the architect, and we used Lester, who is here tonight, Lester Lamon, who has been involved with the other one, and we appreciate his continuity, and he's happy to answer any of the technical issues as we go along. Darlene Horn is here tonight, she's the civil engineer that we put into play, and the other ones are listed on the document that you have, including our attorney, who many of you might know, is Brian Frederickson here in town. And Brian and I did, again, the conversion before, so we've got experience working together for a conversion. So we went through that, the team was in place, and we met the submission statement on June 7, and since that time, we've met with the city a couple times, and been working through a number of details. I would stress also what Patrick did, that we are fully aware that this is a preliminary discussion. We're wanting to lay out the broad vision of what this property is about tonight, and to talk about that, and hopefully get your approval on that, and then move forward with many of the details that are required, that the city engineer would require, and basically the ordinance, and you've got staff in place in Canyon City to deal with that. So just some specifics, the dormitory, Lester has done a great job with taking that and making it so that there's not a lot of walls that would be removed, and basically using that as an asset to get to, how do you create 43 condos in there? And that is the number that we're looking at. Before, when it was an apartment complex, it was going to be low-income, and I stress right now, again, that is not what our vision is. This is market value condominiums that are going to be very nice, and they're going to have varying square footage, some of them very small, like in 300 square foot to the top, it's about 750 square foot. Each one is going to be self-contained, it'll have its own electrical heating and electrical cooling, and also their own washer and dryer, so there isn't an apartment feel to it, it's condominiums, and they're self-sustained. And from our perspective, that was the vision that we wanted to put forward with this. Another building on there is what was the old chapel. The old chapel is going to remain, and Chris Cohen, who was with us tonight, he and I had coffee, was introduced by a city council person, introduced us at one of the meetings that was happening with the Small Business Revolution, and he and I started discussing the Scholastica, and we went to the campus and started walking around, and he believes that some of those specific buildings meet his business interests as far as what he's doing with the school, et cetera, and if we need to bring Chris up, he's prepared to address what exactly is going to go in there. But what I want to do is also think, make sure we're thinking long-term, Chris may not stay there forever. We're trying to come up with a plan that is long-term, and so Chris's business is the kind of business that we want to have there. Not so much where people are coming to come to an appointment or anything else, his is where there's an employee that comes, and they're dealing with people across the planet, where his specifically is focused. And so you're not going to have parking coming in from people that are clients, coming to a meeting, or those kind of things. We're trying to find the people that would be coming in there for business standpoint, or the Chris or others, that that's their office, but they're dealing with kind of tech issues, and it's global in nature, or at least United States in nature, or Colorado in nature, they're not coming to a doctor's appointment, they're not coming to get their teeth cleaned from the dentist kind of thing, and that goes a long ways with the parking. So we decided that the chapel was going to stay, and it's in pretty good shape, and lends itself specifically. So the chapel, as you can see, is this building right here, I'm going to use Patrick's concept, so that's the one there for the chapel. The other one is the historic building, and if you walk through the historic building, the foundation is in terrible shape, and I'm happy to give anybody a tour who wants to go through there. We've had a structural engineer in there, and we're looking at at least $500,000 to repair the foundation. If you walk past the building, if you're looking at from the north side, you can actually see the settling that is going on on that north side, if you just look at anything that's supposed to be straight, it's necessarily not. And so that's a real problem, and we figure the price tag to redeem it is probably about $2 million. Having said that, I've gone increasingly passionate that we need to preserve that building. And it's great, and I was up on Skyline the other day, we were looking down on it, and once that gym was out of there, that building dominates what's going on on that campus, and it is cool, and it's great, and we're trying to preserve it. Our current strategy is, one of the former alumni that graduated from Scholastica is very passionate about this, and she is in contact with all the alumni that are out there, they have a meeting coming up in August, just a few days from now, and she is trying to raise the money specifically to preserve that building. And she's got a big apple that she's chewing on, of course, with $2 million, but she's trying to do that. I emailed her today, and I said, if you're not successful doing that, let's figure out a different strategy. We are not focused on, she doesn't make it by September, was kind of the deadline that we had, and we'll immediately tear it down. My viewpoint has changed on that, I want to do everything we can to preserve it. However, the balance of that is to go on the other side, and we've created new things happening with the dorm becoming condos, and we've got businesses in there, Chris has got his business in the chapel, and the historic building is sitting there like it is, that's not going to work, because it's a pigeon coop, and again, the pigeons on the fourth floor are dominating the thing, and so that is something that we need to deal with. So the gym and pool, both of them had substantial cracks, and as a result, they needed to go away, and so we've hired a demolition contractor to deal with that, and they've been working through that. I want to stress again, I think this is on the public record, all the asbestos has been abated, and that is per both the requirements for the city as well as requirements for the state, and they've been tested multiple times, and they didn't have substantial kind of thing, we're talking about floor tile and those kind of issues, but they have been absolutely done per the code to make that happen. And so I expected actually the maintenance building to be down, there's one little issue that we had a typo on one of the applications going into the state, and as a result, that slowed us down with the applications from the state, and it's coming back here to Kathy at the city. I think that's going to be resolved probably tomorrow, and the next thing will be coming down is the maintenance building. So those buildings had to go away. The other last one is the classroom building. The auditorium is sagging away from the classroom building, and as a result, we can't preserve that either. But the classroom building itself, getting increasingly believing that there's real opportunity there, so it's about 9,000 square feet, and Chris is looking at it, there are other people who are looking at the possibility of doing something with that, and that's why I stress Chris is a type of business that we want to get in there, because he may just choose to just do the chapel, but we want to put up that structure for the classroom building, same kind of thing. So that Planning Area 2, which is the reddish and the green, is basically a business, office kind of orientation. Now, the only caveat I have in there is, again, we're trying to preserve the historical building, and I would like a little bit of flexibility as we navigate that, to say, okay, this is what is going to lend itself to that, but it's probably going to be office kind of thing, and I've got some things that we're working with, or we will work with the city along that line too. And then finally, the walkway that is coming out of the dormitory is going to be gone too. So just in the next week, there's going to be substantial, or two weeks, there's going to be substantial changes yet with that campus. And if you go to the corner of Seventh and Floral, you can now see the mountains, much better than what you could before, and if you go to the corner of Sixth and Floral, you can see the historic building with getting that gym out of there, it is just much more appealing, and so that's what we're up to. So again, taking a look at just finally, and I'm coming up to the end here, the assets that are there, the neighbors are used to those buildings being there. I think the last one you had mentioned was about 50 years ago that it was put in, and so those buildings have been there a long time. The only thing that's going in new is basically the single-family homes at the north end. The rest of it, we're using as assets for that campus to re-put life back into them, and so the people who have historical connections to that campus and the passions behind it, I'm hoping that they grab on and say, hey, this isn't 12 years now, just growing up weeds and the dorms are, everything is becoming worse, we're putting revitalization back into that. And I do stress that there was a historic wall there that was, had the bricks of individuals who had donated over the years, and we preserved those. We just took them down this week, they're now in the historical building, they're there. Back on the table is a booklet you can see, and there's a bunch of pictures in there, and it was in the maintenance building, and we're tearing that down, and I didn't want to take those pictures that are somebody's family and just have them go into a landfill. So if anybody in the audience or anybody else, if you can look through that booklet back there, and you know anybody, we want to get those to them. They're from the 80s and 70s and 90s, and they're pictures of people's families, and I just think that's something that they want to have, and so if you can tell us who that is, we'd like to get it. And I stress that is the attitude that we want to have with this campus. We want it to be preserved, the history that is there, we'll have some markers, we want to name the buildings after some of the history. It's called the Scholastica PDD to recognize the history of that, and we kind of have some thoughts about naming the buildings, et cetera. So that's the passion. As far as the process, and that's the last point, is the process is, and we're pretty aware of what's got to happen, we're going through this preliminary... aware of what's got to happen. We're going through this preliminary process, and then we're going to go into final. We're going to try to push it as fast as possible. But we go into the final for the planned development district. But we also know we need to go through the subdivision process for both, all of those campuses, and to put together those pieces. And each one of these, if I can just step away from the mic for a second and talk. This is going to have its own association. This will have its own business association. This will have its own association, so they can take care of common lighting. They can take care of all the expenses that are in their individual ones. And then the green area, which is what's called Track A in there, that's going to have one person from each of those that we have a budget for that, to make sure that that park area is maintained. And we are also, I can't stand the fences that are on it, but we've got to do it for liability issues at this point. This is going to be an open campus. It's not going to be an island in the city. People are going to get a chance to walk across there, ride their bike across there. There's going to be all kinds of opportunities, just simply to, for people to access it. And if neighbors want to come and eat at the picnic table, they can do that. It's not going to be some kind of closed environment. It's going to open it back up to the area. So one of the things, I used to be involved with economic development myself and community development, and we always talked about jobs and housing, as far as two sides of the same coin. And this campus, the way we're doing it now, is going to be providing jobs. About 30 jobs would be, to answer your question, again, if you want to have Chris come up here, we can do that, but about 30 jobs would be in the chapel. And the classroom building will lend itself to 50 to 60 kind of positions in there. So that's what you're specifically dealing with on that area. And again, 43 is the number for the condo units with varying sizes, and again, owned by market value people who want to come in and do what they want to. So that's our overall vision. We're going to be before you again, if you approve it today, and we'll move forward with this, and we'll have multiple public hearings. And we're, I've got a Facebook page, if anybody wants to be on that, just put in @ScholasticaPDD, and that will bring it up. And we're trying to keep the neighborhood understanding of what's taking place. And I've got some boards that are up there that people can walk by, and we'll keep you up to date as far as what's happening there. So again, check out that photo book if anybody could help us with that. And we thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. And again, I've got some technical people who are all prepared to deal with any technical issues, but we're kind of wanting to deal with the overall picture tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you step away, maybe we should see, do any commissioners have questions for Mr. Lund at this time?
I guess I do, sir. Thank you for coming.
Sure.
You answered quite a few of my questions I already had. Overall, as you said, the large picture, you as the owner own this entire track as the master track.
That's correct.
And the, the single-family home, once it's all built, they will have their single owners. Is that correct? I mean, they will own those buildings?
Yeah, absolutely.
No rentals, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll have to require, or go by this document that we're putting together.
Yeah, I tried to go through this. It's like...
Yeah, it is something, isn't it?
Same with the multifamily residents, too. The condominiums, they will own those. And then we have the homeowners association, which will be the PA1 again. And then there's a condominium owners association, okay? So we're surrounded by these associations. Now, the second area, business district, there are three internal owners of that area?
Yeah, if there are three different lots, that would be correct, yes.
Okay. Then there is a master, I guess a management of Track A. What is Track A?
Track A is the green portion, and that's what I was trying to describe, is this does have its own association, this has its own association, and this has its own association because they've got unique expenses that they have on there.
Right. And that's...
And then Track A is the green portion, and each one would be a third, a third, a third to take care of the cost of the meeting.
And that's the responsibility in the executive board, I guess.
Yeah, and I think they meet once a year, and we just make sure the budget's there to make things happen, so it's not going to be onerous.
There's a representative for each one, one, two, and three.
That's correct.
Will you have any, will you have any more contact, after all this is done and everything, and after the number one and number three is sold, and number three and all that, will you be involved in any more, or will the homeowners association and the condominium association take care of their own? Will you be part of the board, I guess?
Yeah, the answer is yes. When I was in Michigan, doing the 42 unit, I chaired the condominium association for two years to get everybody up and running. And then it took over on its own impetus. The leadership was there, et cetera. So we're trying to put up fences, if you will, that are pretty wide, and let people do their own activities once it's up and running. I think your city attorney is here, and I know she's had conversations with Brian Fredrickson. And we are going to have your city attorney review all the documents at that point, with Brian and myself putting those things together. So that's yet to come, and we're going to make sure. But again, it's giving people the authority to govern their own lives and to, you know, they want to do something cool with the condo, specifically the dormitory, that's going to be condos. They can do that, within guidelines that are there, so.
Right. And the architect, Lester, he's gonna, I'm not going to assume it's a he. Okay, thank you.
It's a he, yep.
Never know. Want to assume that Lester's going to develop this, or as far as architect design, so we do have the continuity of the entire area.
Yeah, absolutely. And Lester, if you want to come on up and just address that point, I'd be happy to have you do that, just so we all are on the same page with that.
I guess I'm trying to get, as far as the overall picture, to make sure it is continuity, and make sure there is a master plan, and make sure that it all is going to be seamless.
That's exactly what we want. So we are working on that. And again, Lester is one, the civil engineer, the attorney, and in fact, the city's attorney will have input on that. But we are looking so that we're not burdening people in the future, that they have some flexibility to govern their own lives and what they want to do. And wouldn't this be cool? So we want to put in an additional picnic table. And yet have boundaries, as I said, fences that basically outline this. And the city staff has been very involved with this as well, to, you know, review the guidelines. They've got some fairly long, couple pages documents that we're working through with them. I'm expecting we're going to meet with them next week. So there's a lot of people who are involved with this to get a look at it, and it all ends up before you, and it ends up before the city council. So Lester, is there a point you want to make about that, Tom?
I would just reiterate what Phil said, and that is, we, we looked at the campus as one campus, even though there are three planning areas. We do have a landscape architect as part of our team, and he was the one that put together the planting guides and landscaping guides for all of it, so that there is continuity throughout the whole piece. Specifically, we know exactly what we're going to do in the, in the green space area. But we've also provided guidelines to Planning Area 1, the single-family residential pieces on top, in terms of, they don't have to plant specific plants, but you've got to have a percentage of it hardscape, a percentage softscape, that kind of thing, and then to provide that continuity through.
Right. I mean, I would just voice the concerns of all the neighbors around. I want this to be the best it can be.
Oh, absolutely.
To make sure that everybody's...
From the very beginning, we've wanted to stand on one corner and look through the campus to the other corner and say, this is one landscape. This is one neighborhood. And so that's been our, that's been our focus since day one.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
You know, I want to stress what you just did, sir, that we really are not trained to, excellence is what we want to do. And we want to have this something that the community is proud of, we're proud of, it works for the city, it's something that is there. And again, with a background in economic development, and I'm going to be very brief about this, but there is a lot of cool stuff happening in Canyon City. And we want to be part of that. And I am thrilled that, you know, we've got some businesses that are owned by local Canyon City residents that have the ability to create good jobs, well-paying jobs, and especially they're connected with the school system to bring some people in. And we see our piece as connected to the greater things that are happening in Canyon City. And we just want to knock this out of the park, that it's a great place for people to be, so.
With that said, and you don't have to be specific, but would you be considering maybe something else, something else within Canyon City to help us build that up, build up our city?
We're having conversations with a number of people, and, you know, I want to stay sequenced. This is our focus right now, so we don't dilute ourselves. But once this is done, I still consider myself young, so we'll see what happens in the future.
And you can put that on your resume, and it'll look good.
Yep, thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Any other questions?
Well, what I'd like to do, show of hands, how many people in the audience would like to come up and say anything? Is anybody looking to come up and have a, does anyone have a comment or a question in the audience? Okay, good.
Could I at least have Chris come up in just two minutes to say?
We do have a question from Commissioner Shagley about parking. So Chris, come on up, tell us what your plan is.
Sure. So this is Chris Cohen, and we've become friends, professional friends, and he's got some great visions that we want to do with one of the specific areas, so.
Would you just like an overall vision statement of what we do? We do primarily work for a federal agency, Homeland Security, Department of Defense, NSA, Department of State, things like that. So we need certain facility attributes for us to be, enable our work, which means we have to have standalone structures. So Main Street doesn't work for us. Most of the buildings in Canyon City from an office-based perspective don't work for our purposes. This does. So it's, they're standalone buildings, they're brick. As we reconfigure them, we can make them into classified spaces where we can do the type of work that we do. It's typically technical in nature, so the type of jobs that we will be planting are junior technicians through senior engineers, doing IT work, and analysis work, and intelligence work.
And about how many employees max would, are you...
Well, there's the question, right? So I know I won't shackle the economic development opportunity by pre-phasing, you know. I will, we are pre-staying, I will only hire this many people. We're working across multiple properties in Fremont County. And so within the development of that, we hope to bring as many jobs to Fremont County that focus on bringing outside dollars to our community. We will have, we anticipate about 30 full-time employees in the chapel that will primarily be daytime shift staff. We do do some 24-hour work, but those are very small percentages of that staff.
Any questions for Mr. Cohen from the commissioners? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before I close the hearing, anything else? All right.
Questions?
I now close this public hearing if there's no further discussion. So we now need, I need to call for a motion and a second based on the findings of fact, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to run the, read the findings of fact, if I would.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Number one, the requested zone change to PDD Planned Development District is consistent with the criteria for zone changes expressed in Section 17.40 of the CCMC. Number two, the requested zone change is part of the process specified in Section 17.17, and will be followed by a final PDD Plan and Guide, final PDD subdivision, and a final PDD site plan. Planning Commission and City Council will have the authority to confirm that the final is consistent with the approved preliminary. Number three, adequate public notice, as required by the city, Canyon City Municipal Code, has been provided. And number four, Planning Commission has conducted a public hearing on the proposed zone change request, providing adequate opportunity to concerned citizens to speak in favor or against the proposed subdivision.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Shagley. Any further discussion? Okay, Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Randy Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I now need a motion and a second for recommendations to council, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
I move the Planning Commission adopt the four findings of fact as stated in the staff
And recommendation to city council?
And I can do that. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the city council for the city of Canyon City approve rezoning request for 615 Pike Avenue as a preliminary PDD, subject to the four conditions contained in the staff report.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Ledoux, thank you. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Randy Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux.
Aye.
Chairman Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley.
Aye.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys, for the presentation tonight. We've got past the first hurdle, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Yes.
So thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you to the residents.
Yes, thank you to the audience. I'm assuming you're all here for this. You might be here for something else, I don't know. We'll see. Okay, moving on to item 4B, minor subdivision, best corner minor subdivision, case number subdivision 2019-006. I now open this public hearing. The provisions of the City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations, and the comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of this, the hearing, as of set forth verbatim. Patrick, do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Next on the agenda, we are to conduct a public hearing on the request by J.D. Kraus and Ty Shepherd for approval of a minor subdivision located at 3110 East Main Street. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of Steinmeier Avenue in East Maine. It was planted in 2018 by subdivision exemption plat to create two lots, one of which was developed as the new location for Jewett's Liquors. The balance of the property exists as one remaining lot, which is 1.86 acres or 81,092 square feet in total area. At the time of construction for Jewett's Liquors, grading operations, utility installation, and construction of a shared series of internal drivelanes were completed. The unbuilt portion of the property retains a C general commercial district zoning. The property is surrounded on three sides, to the east, north, and west, by existing commercial zoning. To the south, it is bordered by an R3 high-density residential zoning, although the neighboring property to the south contains single-family residential dwellings. As previously stated, the unbuilt portions of the property retains a C general commercial zoning district, which requires a minimum lot size of 5,280 square feet. The lots proposed within this subdivision range from 40,000 square feet to 41,092 square feet. The proposal intends to create just two lots. Normally, this would be the subject of a subdivision exemption plat. However, Title 16 specifies that the date, from the date of a subdivision exemption plat is recorded, no further subdivision by exemption plat can be undertaken for a period of five years. In this case, that would prohibit another subdivision exemption plat at this location until 2023. This is why the applicants have proposed a minor subdivision. Now, all, both these lots will take access from a shared internal driveway that goes through the site connecting East Main Street to Steinmeier Avenue. This access solution was approved by CDOT, and that approval prohibits any access from these proposed, from these lots proposed directly to either Steinmeier or East Maine. This internal driveline was originally constructed to provide access to Jewett's, but was intended to serve all three of the remaining lots. In order to qualify as a minor subdivision to the city, the city of Canyon City's regulations, the proposed subdivision must meet the following criteria. The parcel subject to the subdivision request is not more than 10 acres in size. The best corner minor subdivision is 1.86. The resulting subdivision will create five or fewer lots. Two lots is what the best corner minor subdivision proposes. All resulting lots meet both minimum lot area and minimum lot width along street frontage. Within the C-zone, those minimums are 5,280 square feet and 44 feet in width at the street edge, respectively. The best corner minor subdivision exceeds those minimum areas and width requirements on both lots. All lots access a public right-of-way and cannot be, and it cannot be, a right-of-way being created with this subdivision. The internal drive aisle will provide access to these lots, which then accesses both Steinmeier and East Main Street. No new street construction is necessary or proposed. All lots must be served with utilities, including water, sanitary sewer, electricity, and natural gas. Utilities exist around both of these lots, and utility service providers have indicated they will be able to provide services to both lots. Staff finds that the proposed best corner minor subdivision meets the criteria for minor subdivision approval. Staff also finds that the proposed subdivision and commercial lots will consist with, are consistent with the character of the East Main Street corridor. On three sides, there is existing commercial zoning and existing retail functions to the east and north of the two proposed lots. The high-density residential zoning to the south was likely established, so was to serve as a potential transitional zoning to lower-density residential neighborhoods further south along Steinmeier. Staff therefore finds that the establishment of these two lots by... Staff therefore finds that the establishment of these two lots by minor subdivision not only gets around the five-year subdivision exemption prohibition, but creates two lots for commercial uses appropriate to this area of Canyon City. And with that, staff recommends that Planning Commission cite the four findings of fact that adequate public notice was provided, such that Canyon City had the required jurisdiction to conduct the public hearing. Staff also recommends that Planning Commission recommend city council approve the minor subdivision request for the best corner minor subdivision. Planning Commission should be advised that as of this date, staff has received no inquiries regarding this proposal that includes phone calls, letters, or emails. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I am happy to answer any questions that Planning Commission members may have. Present to speak on behalf of this project is one of the owners, Mr. Ty Shepherd.
Thank you, Patrick. Questions for staff from the commission?
I don't.
Was that a sigh of yes, I have a question?
I'm tired from the last one. I do not have any questions.
I don't.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come up and tell us anything about the project? No?
If you'd like me to.
Does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Any questions from the audience? All right. Must be, you did a great job. Okay.
Easy.
Well, hearing no questions or comments, I'll close this public hearing. So now I need a motion and a second based on the findings of fact, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for findings of fact.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Number one, the requested best corner minor subdivision was submitted by East Canyon Commercial LLC, the owner of the property at 3110 East Maine, and that the plat, as proposed, complies with applicable subdivision regulations and is consistent with the minimum area width and coverage of the requirements for the C-dash general commercial zoning district. Number two, adequate public notice, as required by the Canyon City Municipal Code, has been provided. And three, Planning Commission has conducted a public hearing on the proposed minor subdivision plat, providing adequate opportunity to concerned citizens to speak in favor or against the proposed subdivision. I move that...
That's, that's the, that's the motion. That's the first...
That's the motion.
Yeah. Do I have a second, please?
A second.
Commissioner Ladue? Any further discussion? Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley?
Aye.
Thank you. I now need a motion and a second for recommendation to city council, please.
I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the city council for the City of Canyon City approve the best corner minor subdivision.
Thank you. And a second?
A second.
All right. No further discussion. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Shagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd, for coming.
Yes. Nice to see that.
Okay, item C, 4C. Speculative review use, school in R2 medium-density residential zone, case number SRU 2019-002. Do I need to open the public hearing, or do we just continue this?
I would recommend that you open the public hearing. As you know, there are two forms of notice that are required for a public hearing. One are signs posted on property, which the applicant did meet. The other are mailings that are sent to all property owners within 300 feet, which the applicant did not meet by the 15-day deadline. So as not to invalidate the signed notice, we're asking that you open the public hearing and then immediately continue to a date certain of August 28, 2019.
Okay. I now open this public hearing. The provisions of the City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. I now ask that this be continued to August 28, 2019 meeting.
Do we, do we need a, Catherine, do we need a motion and a second for the continuance?
Can I ask for a motion and a second for the continuance to the August 28, 2019 meeting, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for continuance for August 28, 2019, which is our next Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley?
Aye.
Okay, that's it for business. Now we have Planning Commission business.
Mr. Chairman, under item 5A, I'd like to congratulate yourself, Commissioner Ladue and Commissioner Randy Smith, for your reappointments. The council has put you on yet another three-year term. It's a good thing, too, because we would have had a real problem meeting a quorum tonight if they hadn't.
Well, thank you, and thanks to, thanks to us that were reappointed.
Is the pay the same?
Unfortunately, we didn't get a cost of living adjustment this year.
So this next, this next part, over the several years I've been here, I think I've been a chair for the majority of it, we always try to pick a new chair and a co-chair. We don't have a lot of people here to have that discussion for, but I suppose anyone here can nominate a person for chairman, and I believe Randy, no, Gary Clark, Gary?
I think he's vice chair, yes.
He's the vice chair.
He is the vice chair.
At this time. So, Patrick, enlighten me on procedure. I only ask because I haven't been through a procedure, I've only been put in place.
So I believe the last, when this came up last year, what we did was, there were nominations to select a chair, and if we had more than one, there was a paper ballot that was done. And there were nominations to select a vice chair, and if there was more than one, again, there was a paper ballot that was done. It is up to Planning Commission if you want to pursue that, or if you'd like to wait to hold a vote until you have a more full count, a more full commission to do that. And if so, I would say what you probably want to do in that case is extend for one meeting the current chairman and vice chairman arrangement that you have, and you can take this up again in August.
Okay. Is everyone, we're all, okay. So I'd like to extend for one more meeting the current chair and vice chair until we have a full, a full panel here to discuss who would like to possibly move up or move down. Fair?
I think that's fair.
Okay.
A couple of announcements. First of all, on Monday, we were advised by Commissioner Rick Harmon that he was submitting his resignation with immediate effect. I have advised the city clerk's office that we will need to advertise to recruit someone to fill that vacancy. Obviously, I'll keep you informed as to when we get applications, but this will be something that goes to council for their consideration, and they will appoint. Second item is, I believe some of you remember, may remember that a couple of weeks ago, I sent an email about a combined Planning Commission and City Council workshop. Unfortunately, there is no such day as Wester Day.
I saw that.
Yeah.
I got it highlighted.
We don't live in a Game of Thrones world, so I don't know if that's Westeros or not, but at any rate, that is Wednesday, August 7. Now, subsequent to my drafting this agenda, plan, council decided that they were going to change the times of their council, their workshop sessions, their committee meetings. So instead of 4:00 PM, it's actually at 6:00 PM, and I believe their logic for that was so that it wouldn't interfere with people's workdays. So if you're still able to attend, that will be at 6:00 PM on that Wednesday.
On August 7?
On August 7, yes. And if you'd like, I'll be happy to send out a reminder email to everyone next week about that.
I can still make it. I'm still good with it.
Double checking.
It's a little past my bedtime, but.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, Patrick, I think you covered all of the latest news. Does anyone else have any announcements or...
No, sir.
...items to discuss? No? Denise? No? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.